We have a quorum. We're expecting Ted. So we have a quorum with a person on the phone. Ted can come and take a seat at this table. I know it's been a long time since we've done this, but in February, we'll leave our intimate cozy space here. And we'll go to the boardroom. And I'll explain why in a moment. But you do have a quorum?
Okay. We all call the meeting to order with a quorum so we know who's on the phone and who's present. Could you read the roll, please?
Alderman Cohn. Not present.
Present.
Chair Stoudt.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Powers.
Present.
Commissioner Peebles.
Present.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Jay.
Here.
Commissioner Spade, not present, and Commissioner Visentainer, not present.
So we do have a quorum. For convenience sake, I guess, for presentations and people who are attending, we're going to go down and pick up item number five and begin with that tonight. Is the zoning insured?
Good evening. This is a zoning of one parcel at 2700 South Grand. It's presently dual zoned, B2 family zoning district and the H area commercial district. And the rezoning is so that it will be all be in the H district. The site is on the southeast corner of South Grand and Sydney. Kety Garner from Tower Grove Park in the Tower Grove East neighborhood. It's 1.7 acres. It's L-shaped with the building in the rear of the property and a large parking lot in the front. 25,000 square foot building, one story, built in the 1960s. Presently, there's a food store out, which I think is always low prices, and Dollar General. This rezoning extends the H district to the entire site and eliminates the dual zoning. And there's a proposal for a grocery store in the site. The owner developer can fill us in on that. This is the dollar store and the food store is to the right. This is a view of the parking lot and the commercial building. This is Tower Grove Manor next door, just to the south. This is South Grand, Tower Grove Park. Sydney, there's some residential properties adjacent to that. This is the street and buildings to the south. The Ohambra Court is a small street that runs behind it. The back of the commercial building at its loading docks, based on the street. And this is the zoning map of the H Commercial in this portion of South Grand. This is kind of an unusual block to them. A lot of the parcels go all the way back to the next street, including this parcel. Interportion is still zoned, B2 family from one end to the property residential. This is the vicinity of the rezoning. Tower Grove Park is on the left. Tower Grove Manor is the tall residential building on the right. This is the Naenolia Grace Hill Head Start Program. Both of these properties also go all the way back to the street behind it. To the north, there's another elderly housing and offices. There's a vacant gas station, but we'll see a chapter 99 next month. If this is going to be a coffee shop. There's residences to the north. And these are the, this is two of the four houses that are adjacent to the parking lot. You can see the parking lot right here. Make backup to the side of the door. This is another view of the residential on the north side and the commercial on the south side. The strategic land use plan calls for neighborhood commercial for this whole site and most of the frontage along South Grand, going north. Staff recommends approving the petition to change the zoning to H area commercial and being in conformity with the strategic land use plan neighborhood commercial area, which encourages commercial to serve adjacent neighborhood. And this commercial certainly does that. The zoning administrator recommends this rezoning. And it's a good for the dual zoning and helps the parcel on the uses that are presently there and in the future to conform with the zoning. I'll be glad to answer any questions. And Mr. Shaw of Grand Real Estate Holding is the owner of the building and business also. He's available for questioning.
Any questions, Mr. Shaw?
Was there an impetus for why you came in to do the rezoning? Is there a plan in foot for future development or just proactive?
No plan per se. We subdivided the building about two years ago now. We put in a $50,000 lease on about 40% of the property. And just recently, I closed down my operation because I was owner occupant of the place. And we're doing interior renovation today, et cetera, making way for grocery stores to open.
Cool.
And they're going to be doing a much more trimmer operation to prevent all these contracts. I have about eight years left on the family dollar lease, eight and a half actually, and probably some 10 million. So long term, it's going to be as in grocery store slash retail in the same format that it's at right now, and that's the way I wish to maintain it. The whole objective of rezoning was to kind of clean up the section, be as committed as commercial as, I suppose it's meant to be.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
I'll just add that over the years, he's been in our office a number of times getting variances of the board of management over for some kind of retail or grocery store that was going to go there. So this was just a way to clean it up.
Thank you. It cleaned it up. What conversations have you had with the neighborhood on the, on Ohambra?
I have, I mean, as far as the rezoning.
Yeah, the rezoning.
I have any conversations. I had a meeting, actually several, with the Tower Grove Neighborhood East Association. And I assume, I presume they addressed all those concerns of the residency by the association. And, I mean, they supported it. They had some guidelines for me to maintain, which I did. Improvements on the exterior, parking lot, I did that, lighting, et cetera. So once all those were maintained and I kept consistent with those, you know, there were. But I didn't have any personal or direct conversations with the residents. It was just made it through the neighborhood associations.
And there will be a public hearing, I assume. This is an interesting case where the current zoning actually is there to protect those neighbors. But the building is also there. So we're not changing anything physical.
That was one of the things that we were in the meeting is they had said that the whole, because it was dual zoning so that it could protect, as you say, these neighbors. And because of that, they said that, you know, you need to do certain things to gain our support. And I abided by those and I did that and I think I paid the attention.
And that was with the Tower Grove East.
Right. And the board members supported it because the neighborhood association supported it.
Any other questions? Anything in motion?
So move.
Okay.
Motion's been made and checking in. Could you read the roll, please?
Sure. Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
Chair Stoudt.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Powers.
Aye.
Commissioner Peebles.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Jay.
Aye.
Commissioner Spade.
Aye.
And motion passes with all present voting yes.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Shaw for coming to talk for us.
And you may have noticed in that one is that during the strategic land use process, that whole block was in the commercial category.
Go on to item number six.
There's two redevelopment plans. First one, the chapter 99 redevelopment. Second one, someone's going to handle it with chapter 353, which is a little bit different. This is the west portion of downtown. Union stations off to the east, this is Market Street, Interstate 64, 40. Market, South Jefferson. And particular property is on the southeast corner. It's 2.4 acres between the two parcels that make up the office site and the one parcel that's the parking on the south side of Market. There's a three-story office building. It actually is two on one end and three on the east end. It's been vacant since 2011 and rated in fair condition by the Land Use and Redevelopment Authority. Green Street acquired the property for $4.6 million. And it's a former Wells Fargo advisor office building, which was set up for one tenant. Green Street's plan is to renovate and major reconfiguration of this 84,000 square feet so that it'll be an LED certified multiple tenant building. There's going to be two tenants. And basically, the east and the west portions will be two different tenants with the different mechanical systems and entrances and unique features to those spaces. And there's 165 parking spaces across the street. And the total project amounts $4.7 million. This is an aerial view of Market Street, Jefferson, Wells Fargo's campus. MSD is down here. And this is the redevelopment site. Two parcels with the building and one parcel with the parking. And this is some views of the building. We're talking about there being two major entrances. The first, the western one's going to be on the corner of Jefferson and Market. The other entrance is to the east near Chestnut. And this is a view from Market Street, from the parking lot looking over. And this is the parking lot. The FBI owns to the east. Marriott Courtyard Hotel is to the west. This is some ground floor elevations. You can see there's two spaces, each with their own rendering. The western portion is a two-story and the eastern is three stories above ground. In the vicinity, of course, to the west is the Wells Fargo Advisors Campus and parking to the south of Market. To the north is another office building, also owned by Green Street. I think the same as the hall, offices are in there. And to the south of the office building and to the west of the parking lot is the MSD headquarters and offices. There's also buildings in the vicinity of the parking lot. The south and west of the office and the parking lot is the Marriott Courtyard Hotel. On the east side is the FBI offices. And across the street from the parking lot is Jefferson Bank of Trust. And just to the east of that is the jury in. Both sites in the area are in the business industrial preservation area. And staff finds them in conformity with the strategic land use plan, business industrial preservation area. They're also very close to the specially mixed use. They cover close to downtown. This plan provides for 10 years of tax abatement. There is no eminent domain. And staff recommends approval of the zoning study. I'll be glad to answer questions. And Brian Pratt of Green Street is here to also discuss.
Any questions?
Just in reviewing the blighting study. The argument seems to be that because it's vacant, it's blighted. I mean, we as a commission are supposed to rules not on the tax abatement, but on the determination of blighting. This seems to be an example of the definition of blighting being taken a little too far. It's a pretty nice building. Really glad it's been repurposed. I can't see sure at this stage it's being qualified as a blighted building. And if you, the checkmarks, which I only did briefly, there were a few explanations, except for that it doesn't occupy or public hazard. And I, I would invite somebody to respond to that. But it seems to be a, taking the blight definition too far.
David, any comments?
At the LCRA meeting, they discussed that this building was set up and functioned as a financial office and that their goal was to get creative companies in there, high tech, and wanted to have an LED certified building. And the amenities like entrances and that, you know, are major expenses. And they were looking at it as that it was functional and not for what they were wanting to do. And therefore, blighting was, I guess, more based on economics and physical, social.
That's not really the definition of blight.
Actually, it is. There's three, three, economic, socially, and business.
David, would you plug in on that?
Included in the definition of blighted area under 99, 320 sub three constitutes an economic or social liability or a menace to the public health, safety, sorry, morals or welfare in its present condition or use. So economic is actually included in the definition.
But I have to challenge, how is this an economic blight? I mean, it's next to MSD, a multi-billion dollar headquarters, regional headquarters office. And I mean, certainly the property values downtown are moving in a different direction than the property values in my neighborhood have been.
So Brian, your turn.
Okay.
I'm just telling you the law.
I'm just telling you the blight, but Brian Pratt, Green Street. You know, I think the building was built to address a specific corporate need within a corporate campus. And as a standalone building in and of itself, the amount of renovation necessary to reposition it for what the market demand is today. Keep in mind, it's been available from Wells Fargo on the market dating back to prior, really, prior to 2011, but that's when they moved out officially. Nobody stepped up to take it as a single purpose building. Some of that's the parking situation. But much of it has to do with the layout of the facility in and of itself. So the improvements we're proposing to make are as much both functional but cosmetic to position the building so that you can attract the type of office footprint, 30,000, 15,000, 60,000 versus an 85,000 square foot unique use building. And from that perspective, it's functionally obsolete because it was built to be a data center for the trust group that AG Edwards. And in those single purpose users, they could use the bones of those buildings simply, are few and far between. So it's likely to remain, if you were to leave it in its current condition, our opinion, vacant for a considerable period of time because it simply doesn't fit the market demand today. So what we're proposing to do is to redo the front entrance as well and create a specific side entrance so that we can have two dedicated entrances. The building would be divided in half, so to speak, so you could do two tenants, possibly three on the rear. We do have a 30,000 square foot tenant interested. They're a cloud IT computing company based in St. Olles County. They want to move into the city. So the renovation of this building for us is to do the technical improvements that'll attract creative companies that want to be in class A office space. Don't necessarily want to be in a 30-story tower, 18-story tower downtown, but like the proximity to the central business district. So, you know, the question of blight and economic or functional obsolescence in this case, I believe, is if the building is sat vacant, it's likely to remain vacant in its current condition. Does the exterior look good or are there cracks and peeling paint and all those things that I think physically people associate with blight? Probably not. But I think if you had the opportunity to go to the interior, see the design and the necessary modifications to bring this property back to productive use, you'd find that it is impeded by its current configuration.
Tell us about your renovation and the lead criteria working on it.
You know, as is typical in most of our Green Street projects, we do like to try to achieve lead standards. A, it's extinguishing the environment, and B, it's just sensible design practice and construction, in our opinion. And we find that the type of tenants that we seek to create like to be in the building. So I don't know that we haven't necessarily had the checklist fully figured out at this point because we're still going through design and other things. But, you know, we'll be striving to at a minimum be in the lead certification or lead silver levels for the building. What the tax abatement effectively allows us to do is some of these improvements that you really can't recapture value from through the lease rate. New entrances, things like that, takes a lot of money to do that, but it's difficult to push the rent level to offset those costs. And that's where the economic need for a tax abatement fits the situation.
And Brian, the parking is, I always thought that was part of the Marriott campus.
So do we. So we took a closer look. So MSD has, over the years, rented some of that from Wells Fargo. And, you know, as AG Edwards built the garages on the west side of Jefferson, that lot probably became less important to them. But it was included in our acquisition and is necessary for us obviously to provide sufficient parking for.
So that belonged to Wells Fargo, right?
Yeah, it was, it was a, you jumped north of it.
Is there any restoration needs for that parking lot?
We'll be doing some repainting and updates, security enhancements to the lot asphalt as well. It's in reasonably good shape, but before we have the use on it, we'll certainly be making sure the asphalt's in adequate condition.
Any other questions or comments?
Approval. Second.
The moving agenda that we approved the blight study, blighted conformity of the blight. Can you read the roll, please?
Certainly. Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
Chair Stoudt.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Powers.
Aye.
Commissioner Peebles.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Jay.
Aye.
Commissioner Spade.
Aye.
And motion passes with all present voting yes.
I think maybe the only person on the board that's heard my rant, maybe Patrick, it could be Dan, we frequent the same bar, is that the city of Clayton has blighted two buildings in the middle of Clayton. And not only did they blight two buildings in the city of Clayton for, two somewhat historic, not necessarily designated, but of character and a pedestrian scale, to be replaced with a high-rise tower. The raming of tax abatement was a simple one-size-fits-all. It was a 20-year tax abatement for that and in the city of Clayton. And so you can tell that I probably do rant about that a little bit because I will say, on this sort of modest project that you hear, we have other places a little further in the central west end, lots being developed. A key one is one that we passed, which is at the old Heart Association site across from the library. And it's going to be a high-rise tower of 200-plus units. Betsy had spent a good deal of her life working on, design review was part of it because it's in the historic districts, it's in the Form voice code. And I will say that the scrutiny for that was extreme. Excuse, not extreme, was appropriate for being in that marketplace. And the ultimate tax abatement that came for that, from our scrutiny, for wanting the practical things that Dan talks about, was 16 years. Because it ended up being something that was, let's see what we're getting, see what challenges we're overcoming, and come to that. And so I'm sort of proud of us as a city in that regard. And I'm pissed as hell at Clayton for just being, oh, let's just do this.
Well, I think I would suggest that we, our blighting report gives a little better cover.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I agree.
I'd like to vote responsibly and really understand what it is that in this forum to give me any direction. By the way, I think Green Street is a terrific company and I really think this is a great project. But I do think we should take this chart seriously, take trouble about it.
And you're right. It starts with LCRA, that's the report. We could spend some effort.
Go on to item number seven, if there's a chapter 353. The 320.
So many of you commissioners have been around for a while. Here's your quiz. How many of you have been around when we voted for the establishment of a new 353? Some of you might have been. Cortex, yes. So in the redevelopment report, 353 is a relatively, a rare occurrence, more rare now than in the past. 353 being applied at Cortex in a new situation, relatively new, 200 acres, giving them some self-management to it. And what Roman's about ready to present is about an old 353. Again, it's a geography, not a particular individual site. I say that because you may know that I have a bias. I like that we do redevelopment areas versus individual buildings. That's certainly what the case is. And the case in this particular situation is they've been around for a while. And Roman has an aspect of this existing one to present.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. And Don mentioned this is an amendment to an existing chapter 353, development plan. Addendum number six to the development plan of the Cleveland Landing Redevelopment Corporation was submitted by the Redevelopment Corporation on December the first to planning permission for its review. The Cleveland Landing, I think everybody is familiar with. It's a nine-block area by the Dr. Martin Fairbridge, Mississippi River, the East Bridge, and the newly designated Interstate 44. It includes a mix of commercial uses. Those include. It includes a mix of commercial uses. Those include offices, parking facilities, bars and restaurants. In a historic riverfront setting, virtually the entire district is located in a national register historic district. And as you know, it attracts lots of conventioners and tourists, particularly during the summer years. This amendment would essentially extend the development plan for an additional 25 years. That's basically what's being proposed here. The addendum wouldn't affect the current blighting status of the development plan and doesn't involve any proposed development projects or any proposed land uses, unlike many of the development plans that we typically review. The existing development corporation is the Le Cleve Landing Redevelopment Corporation. John Clark is the president of that organization. He's here tonight, as is Craig Easterfeld of Blackwell, the attorney that represents the corporation. They're both here tonight and will be available for any questions that we may have. Just by way of background, since this is a rather old redevelopment area, the Le Cleve Landing Redevelopment Area was established by ordinance back in 1975. That ordinance approved the development plan that Le Cleve Landing Redevelopment Corporation submitted. Since then, the development plan has been amended five times. The most recent amendment, which was amendment, addendum number five, was approved back in 1998. That was one year before our current planning commission was established. The previous five amendments were reviewed by the planning commission's predecessor, which was the Community Development Commission. The planning commission's recommendation for Chapter 353 development plans by statute is to include a determination of several conditions and to provide a rationale for that determination. However, in this case, the Community Development Commission, which was the prior, or the predecessor of the planning commission, previously reviewed that development plan for all of the required determinations in that statute. So the planning commission, in essence, doesn't need to make any of those determinations at this point. Board Bill Number 209, which would establish, or which would further this amendment of the redevelopment plan, was introduced by Phyllis Young, who, as you know, is the former organ of the Seventh Ward. She has since resigned, and that automatic position is currently vacant. But she did introduce it prior to her resignation. The city's strategic land use plan designates the entire Le Cleve Landing area, as well as much of the surrounding area, as a specially mixed-use area. As I mentioned previously, it includes a mix of uses from offices, parking facilities, bars and restaurants, so it fits well with this specially mixed-use area. However, given the fact that there are no proposed uses or proposed development projects, technically, the planning commission doesn't necessarily need to review conformity with the strategic land use plan in this particular case. But it is in conformity with the plan. In terms of the comments, currently, tax abatement is only available in this area with the consent of the planning commission and the president of the Board of Public Service, who, as we know, is Rich Bradley here on our commission. That provision would not be affected by this addendum. And the development plan no longer authorizes the use of eminent domain, and that too would not be affected by this addendum. Staff is recommending approval of addendum number six to the development plan of the Le Cleve Landing Redevelopment Corporation, which again is a Chapter 353 development plan. Mr. Clark and Mr. Easterfeld are here tonight and happy to answer any questions you may have.
And one of the things, because we keep referencing them as an entity, is that in a 353, there is an entity that gets rights to control, in a certain degree, the area founded by the 353. That corporation is in existence in here. And the ongoing ability of that organization to do its monitoring and how things occur in accordance with the plan is what gets extended here. David or Craig, did I summarize that?
Yes.
Roman, earlier slide said that these conditions had already been tested in 1998. Do we have any basis for knowing that in 2015, they're still, I mean, they've been reviewed, the conditions are still valid?
Well, just to give you an idea of some of those conditions, they were included in your, in the resolution, or they were. So for instance, I'll read the ones that were more, most pertinent. Whether the public interest declared in this chapter will be effectuated by the development plan, whether it's in the public interest. Again, those determinations were made by the Community Development Commission in consultation with David Meyer, our attorney. He basically said that we did not have to go forward and make those same evaluations.
And one of the things you will have heard is that no property gets tax abatement as a result of this action.
I guess I'd be curious to hear what's happened since 1975, of good and bad. I kind of feel like we've gone through this heyday period, and now we're kind of in this dip, and, but yet, there's all these good things happening all around with City Arch River and North Riverfront Development, and who knows, maybe we'll have two football stadiums in the area. But what, I would be interested to hear what's the outlook for the corporation as you look towards the next generation of this development?
From the beginning, the, I think in retrospect, personally, now being the head of the group, I believe that, you know, residential should have maybe been part of it as it all got developed at the same time. I think the phasing in of it and the timing has been an enemy. Whereas there were three, right when I started, there were three plans for development of residential that I kind of came up with, and some of it had started right before I came in. That was eight years ago, and then, as we all know, the economy goes sideways, all three of them went out the window. I think we're at a point now where that is not either an excuse or is real, that there are things happening, and a lot of money, and a lot of effort, and a lot of people are involved, and a lot of construction, frankly, in the next nine months, year, we're going to have a very tough time down there because of all the construction. But, you know, with progress, there is a lot of good things that are going to happen. All the activity that will happen right to the south of us on the other side of the East Bridge, where the Arch Garage will be taken away, that's a big positive. It's a positive for residential. That GRG bought what is now the Switzer Lot, is a placeholder for likely would be residential. There is, it's interesting, I was in a meeting yesterday, we're out of parking. They're tearing down the garage, that's all a construction site. We're out of parking spaces during the day because a lot of the properties are pretty full of office space. Now, some of the bars and restaurants with the construction and what have you, all our village, there is, you know, we're facing some real challenges there. But as we move forward, we've had in the last couple of years, people looking at, say, where GRG just bought some property. We had some folks that wanted to put a low-end economy-scale hotel there. Without this reaffirmation of 353 rights, we wouldn't have been able to do too much about it. And we would have needed friends in City Hall or what have you, but if they want to build it, they would have just built it. And so the highest best use of the property is higher-end residential, and I think that's going to be happening because of all that's going on around us.
So it's their ability to maintain and implement their plan that we're extending. The hotel that was going to be able to squeeze in prior to us doing this would not have been in really accordance with the plan and not desired. GRG actually ended up buying the property as sort of a friendly party to buy the property and incorporate it into a more comprehensive planning effort. So that was a squeaker. Okay, we have a lot of agreements and merchants associations and sort of legal infrastructure in place down there that is dependent upon the 353 plan still remaining effective. And so what we want to do is to extend the term of the 353 plan so that we still have the ability to intercede when somebody tries to do something that's not consistent.
So has there been a, I just want to make sure because I've seen plans. I just don't know if they're official or not, but is there an updated master plan for the 353 area?
Yes.
Is that the MVVA document?
MVVA, Michael Van Valkenburg out of Brooklyn, New York. That is just for Saranen's original design of the yard.
Understand that.
That they're doing.
Right.
They are influencing some of the activity where Washington comes into Third Street and underneath 44, and that's all been redesigned, and they're working on it as we sit here. But our, our street plan, streetscape, type of building faces, that's been updated since the original HOK plan, and that was done three years ago.
Okay. Is that something we've seen, Don?
I was just going to say, for clarity's sake, though, you might be talking about somewhat different plans. The plan that was through here was last through here in 98 as an amendment.
The streetscape was in the public improvement.
Right. So this particular thing that you're looking at really was last year in 1998?
Okay.
Other questions?
Approval.
Second.
The moving second is that we.
Previous roll.
And the previous roll has been requested. Are there any objections on the telephone or any objections by any of the commissioners here to the use of the previous roll? If there are none, matter passes.
So I'll ask these two gentlemen to stay for just a second. To build a little bit on Ed's comment, and something that they know that I'm probably going to say, is that in this area north of the East Bridge to the new Stan Span, between 70 and the river, John spoke of, boy, it got tough there when the economy went bad. You know, there were a lot of dynamic things that were thinking about there. People bought dwellings with the, or at least north of the spot dwellings as an idea for, yada, yada, yada. And nothing happened. The Arch Grounds as a transformation is going to cause some pardon our dust-type concerns for a while. Where this is leading to is that next week, the week after, we, the planning agency, SLDC, and partnered with the GRG, meaning we're using GRG's money for the most part, is looking at that entire area as, under a new planning auspices, as to how, now that we have some definition to the north with the new bridge, how do we look at, one, leveraging the river and recreation as an asset to help formulate a real definitive master plan for the whole area? That's a work that we're just undertaking now. And I, it's important to say that because there's a lot of thoughts going on in this area. And the second part, and why I smile, is that, is that in discussions with Le Cleve Landing is a reminder that in this transformation and the greater good, we might ultimately need to use the city's toolbox in terms of regulations and whatnot that might overlay onto the area that's in Le Cleve Landing and agreeing to cooperate with that nature. I'm pretty excited about it. One of the things that people have, hear me say fairly often is, if you look at that rectangle and stand in any of the streets at the top, at the left, and look down the streets, you see only, one of the few places in the city where you can see the water. You can see the Mississippi. The other places, the North Riverfront Park, System Retrouves Park, but, and the Arch Grounds is different, but that's a unique attribute. You can walk, you can see to the river, and we want to amplify that location from that point.
And having worked down there, sometimes the river comes up.
And sometimes, if the flood plain is natural, is the gates up by the power plant. So I think that's pretty exciting. Now, I will have to say that there are two principles of design firms that knew that there's a property opportunity, and it's being performed by other firms, but.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Let's just stay in this mode and go on to item number eight, and talk to us about the preservation.
Okay, another question. Thanks, Congressman. Another question for members. How many of you have been around when we've done a determination that we would or would not take on a review from the Preservation Board?
Yes.
Couple of you, all right. So it's something that we do infrequently, so Dick will present, and if we need to have a little conversation to help get people's knowledge base of it better, we will.
I think this is number 12, it's sort of the reviews that have gone to the planning commission for this decision. And I believe a lot of times it's been reviewed in one time, but forty-nine.
Not this one. You're talking generically.
In the past. So this is a house at 2225 Chipawah, Marine Village neighborhood. Is that the discretion of the planning commission to either accept or deny the undertaking of As we said in the resolution, there's a two-step process. Today is the first step, voting on if it will, if you will conduct the review. The second step then depends on what your decision is. If the planning commission decides to conduct the review, you provide notice to the affected parties, and there's setting a time of the actual review, which we'll discuss later. The other option is if the planning commission decides not to do the review, it's treated like other Preservation Board decisions, and the applicant and other parties' standing in this can, may, Dick administration will feel so, of course. Now, a major criteria in the ordinance limits the review to determining the correctness of the provisional decision, and then that's what the decision is called. It's called a provisional decision of the Preservation Board. By reviewing the record as deduced before the Preservation Board, in mind of that local law and appropriate standards, I think, I also do remember from doing this, I guess, two, three years ago, that you will get a, if we, if you decide to take this review, you will get a large amount of material. And oral and written arguments may be made, but no new or additional evidence may be This is background, the Preservation Board decision denying the demolition of 2225 Chipawah, a two-story, single-family house, has fire damage, and it was, it's in the Marine Village National Historic District, and it's owned by Abigail Wilt. The matter was called, deferred, and then heard and considered by the Preservation Board for three hearing dates, starting in June, July, and a three-month period, and then they came back in October. Eric Korenski is here from Savo, attorney in law, and filed a review request on behalf of the property owner in a letter dated November 18, 2014. In general, the procedures are that demolition permits are applied for our building division. They get routed to reviewers at the Cultural Resources Office. Then a decision of the Cultural Resources Office, the applicant doesn't agree, they can appeal to Preservation Board, which is what happened. And then the Planning Commission can choose to review provisional decisions of the Preservation So I guess the requested action is the Planning Commission discussion with the staff, followed by vote in regards to accepting the undertaking of this review or not at a future date. A little bit of information from the ordinance, the Planning Commission has 20 days to give a written notice, they must give a written notice of the decision, and at that same time that that notice is given, Cultural Resources Office provides a full and complete evidentiary record to the Preservation Board. That can be filed of what appeared before the Preservation Board. There is time needed to get that all together, and that happens at the same time. We need to consider getting that record together and officially making the notice. And it talks at that time of making a decision on the date. You can also discuss that now if you decide to go.
So, so simply put, is since, what was it, since 1999, we've had 11 folks that have been aggrieved at Preservation Board, for lack of a better word, to say, hey, we're going to exercise our opportunity to ask the Planning Commission to take another look at it, to review the same materials, there's not new evidence that the Preservation Board had, and do that in a thorough manner. It's a, it's a, it's a matter that takes a little time to do, and ask for a new vote where we can approve what the commission did, overturn it, or make certain modifications to it, or you can. And then if at that outcome, they feel further aggrieved, they can go to court. So it's one last possibility at the city level to, to, to look at the evidence and make a determination. And we've agreed to take on these reviews 10 out of the last 11 times. The 11th was, was the couples.
Yep.
Yes, I remember.
Yeah.
Anybody have any?
So what action is needed?
The action is, do we want to undertake this review?
See it, yeah. I mean, one, I think one of the unique situations here is that you have the older person actually sitting on that board, reviewing this the last three times, I guess, that came before them, right? So you've got the older person saying that he wants to save the building, you've got the Cultural Resources Office asking that the Preservation Review Board deny the application.
Just standard.
Just standard for things that are within the guidelines of, what could be solved before, what it structurally sounds, but you've got, you know, letters from the Neighbor Association, and to me at least today, I don't know if everyone else got one. I think the one upside to review would be that we'll probably find that, we'll probably vote to uphold the decision, I would hope, on this board, and that could make the case harder for them in court, if they're wanting to go forth with the demolition. So I think that would be one good outcome of review, but I, you know, as a person that lives down the street from this address and part of the Neighbor Association, I will definitely hope that this can be upheld in its current form. So I don't know if, how the outcomes have been in 11 times, but I, I don't know what the court looks at, that they would see that the city twice looked at a review on this property, and that on both occasions it became the same conclusion. But do I feel like I have more of an ability than Cultural Resources and the Preservation Board in these cases, or that this body does? I, I question that. I don't know. The Planning Commission is better at determining cultural resources than the Preservation Board.
That, that's both the issue about the review. So Cultural Resources does what it does, it preserves culture, so many people feel it stacked.
Right, right.
And so we're the, we're the little more objective, you know, I think that's what we're supposed to.
And we would be looking at their, what they looked at and what their outcome was.
So the.
Nothing else.
Commissioner Powers sort of described that, is that when we establish this second level of review, it's just that, you're going to see things that have come before you, before these other bodies, and decisions have been made. There won't be new material presented, but there will be, the applicant will have a chance to make a, a, a certain degree of argument, and the Cultural Resources will have, Office have a certain degree of argument. And it will be through a board that's a slightly different board, maybe has a different perspective about things, and then you vote. And then one of the things that Mike referred to is, then the buck stops. It's, 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 all the city activities have occurred, and then it goes to court.
But we would be able to ask questions like, why is $300,000 in insurance proceeds haven't been used to stabilize the building since the report?
Uh, pretty limited.
Yeah, very limited.
You have to determine things from, from the.
From the record that exists.
Well, it's right here.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's there, right. But you don't, the engineer, the engineer doesn't get to come in and quizz them.
Determination of the Preservation Board.
Their process.
Their process.
Yeah. So the engineer doesn't come and get to comment about the structural report, the real estate agent doesn't come in.
We're just, we're just, we're just in one of these where there was, where the owner access to presented to us and all that stuff.
Well, there's, we, we usually establish a rule of how long each side gets to make an argument.
You can make an oral and written argument, but it has to be based upon a record.
Based upon the record.
No new.
Not adding something new.
Right, right.
I've ventured us up more so than we've some say of things.
So it's, it's, you know, it is a, I'm looking at Adana, because she, she ends up in anticipation that does the, does the work of making sure the record is done. Because frankly, the, the, the heavy-duty work in part is making sure, because you know that if we went to court, we'd be finding, we'd be compiling this record and transcripts. So the heavy-duty part is getting that right, making sure we proof it and do it right and share it with you folks. You then have the obligation to read it and study it, and then we'll have, at a, at a, at a meeting, the, the, Betsy and, and the applicant have a chance to make a guided argument to remind you of, you know, on page 34, such and such information, that type of stuff.
Should we want to take this on, what's the, what's the timeline on being able to get this done, get the information together?
Since this is the 7th, the 27th, which is a Tuesday, would be the last day that that notice could go out and the record can come together and be distributed.
Or not just come back.
Which is, I guess, a week and a day before February 8, which is a pretty short period of time. But you can, you have the ability to take this on at regular meetings or set up special meetings.
The, Dick is.
Would we not take it up?
Pardon me?
On what basis would we not take it up? I mean, it's sort of our job to be a, a second hearing, so I, because we would read it and go, oh, this is like, no way.
I, I'd like you to make that judgment. If, if, if the floodgates came and we were getting five of these a month to, to question, maybe that might be a different context. Answering Dick's question a little bit is, is that it's, it, our legal timeframe and procedure proceeding from this point is quite generous for us to take time, meaning we, we compile the record and we get a time to do that. We would not be taking this up at the February meeting.
Right.
So if you're the, if you're wanting to get this building down, if you're the owner of this property, and the likelihood of us coming back with a favorable, I think, is low on their end, then we're kind of pushing their demolition back in certain sense, if they have to take it to court, right?
They don't have permission to tear anything down right now.
And they wouldn't take it to court until we finish.
Right, right, right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. By asking us, and we take it up, they, it's not a fast track to court.
I guess my motivation with my question was more about swiftness of this to, to, I assume the building is in jeopardy by not shoring it up after the fire, and I'd want this to be a swift process, fair, you know, I want, I want, I have no idea, I haven't, I'm not, I have not seen the building, I have no idea what this is, so I'm interested in personally seeing the information on this, the record, so that we can be fair about this, but be swift about it too.
So I've thought of two things, and, and, you know, there's a, we're making some judgments here. We've been asked to make this judgment.
Yes.
They didn't have to ask us to do this. And, you know, the Berlin Commissioner has the duties to make sure that, that things are held and safe and the, and people aren't endangered, so that part. Yes, with all due speed, we would want to do things. We're, we're, we're allowed by the structure is not to, not be rushed. So, so that we, we, we don't necessarily in that case need to say, my God, we're taking this on, so we have to have a special meeting in two weeks. That's not the case.
Yeah.
We have time to get the record prepared, do it at a meeting that we're, we're comfortable that we have time to, to, to be diligent and read your materials.
Fair, but it be.
Well, I, yeah. I mean, this isn't like SLU and the Peeble Building where you've got lots of resources. I imagine the person that's wanting to make this request doesn't have that type of.
And you'd remember, we do have a slight difference in that we can say yes, uphold, change, or make some modifications.
Yeah.
That's a look up.
Okay. I, I think we should.
So we should vote on whether we want to review?
I don't know. I'm, I just am personally kind of opposed to taking this up. I think that, you know, Betsy and, and team do a really thorough job of evaluating these things, not just based on their cultural merit, but their current circumstance, and, you know, the fire and everything was obviously taken into consideration upon that determination. And the Preservation Board obviously took three months to, to think about this, and I don't say that slightly, but, you know, they heard it, postponed it, heard it again. I fear that maybe if we're just looking at their work, we might ultimately come to the same conclusion, which does nothing but delay and create another process for the applicant, but.
But that's, I think that's their risk, and they're preparing to do that.
Sure.
And I think, I think, I think we should hear it, and for that very reason, to do, you know, our due diligence for, on their behalf.
But either way, you know.
And I don't want, I personally don't want, I don't think we should talk about it now to read into the tea leaves what we think we're going to.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to.
I don't think that's appropriate.
Right, but I also think that, I mean, they may want to take this to court anyway, so they probably might be just doing this as some sort of like perfunctory part of the process to just get it over with so that they can go to court and say that they did it. You know, I mean, we're likewise, I don't want to read into what judgments we may come up with as a committee, but I don't want to read into the mind of this property owner and say that, you know, they're doing this with the hopes that we're going to overturn some sort of decision of the Preservation Board. They may be just doing this.
Commissioner Powers' point is, is that at least we've done our full duty here, if it, if they want to continue to take that further, so I.
I think the unique thing is that, like, the three meetings, which is, is rare, the deferral because of interest in public comment, because there was a lot of public input on this one, and also the fact that you have an older person on the commission. I think those are unique things that make me feel like there may have been more review of this property than probably a lot that come to that board.
But this commission has overturned, you know, decisions by the Preservation Board, and so it has served on both sides of, of this equation before, so I don't think it's, you know, fatal complaint that, that the Preservation Board has.
Well, and given that the alderman for the board is on that, it might be true of us to show that there's some impartiality in the process as well.
I'm not going to vote against it. I just wanted to impart my, my first thought, but if it's the majority consent of the board, I'll, I'll support it.
What kind of cost does it to City Hall?
Oh, we just got new copias. There's very little color stuff, I think.
I suppose that in, in that vein, whatever's prepared for our review would then be likely available, should it then be taken to court, you know, just not double work on staff in that regard, I mean, you guys, there are tons of.
Uh, you know, I'll actually, I'll, I'll make, Adana's lived through this and is sort of starting, because the, the proofing that we do is pretty damn earnest.
Yep.
And, because we're doing it for you guys the same way as we're doing it as if it was to go to court, probably the good news is we're also not necessarily having some judge brief down our neck that says, thou shall do it by X, Y, Z date and get it right.
And then that material could be.
And that material's locked in. That material then goes to court along with whatever your findings would be. Got it?
So the ordinance says that a, so the ordinance says that a preservation denial can be appealed to the Planning Commission if they decide to hear it.
You're right. Yeah, yeah.
And are we, are we?
For some reason, they gave us the wiggle room to not hear things.
It, it, that's a, that's right.
Well, I'm just trying to figure that out.
Yeah, yeah. Now, I will say at, at one time, it, it's the, good point, glad you reminded me that. At one time, when the ordinances were redone in 1999, they made it so that everything of the Preservation Board was a provisional decision and could go to the Planning Commission. And that would mean if somebody did a vinyl window, and the Preservation Board said, you can't have a vinyl window, they could come to that, us. That was, wait a minute, so that, that was out of, out of kilter and thought, so, because it was really meant, one of the things is, no, no, we trust the Preservation Board, but there's some things, like a demolition, which is, is once and forever, when it's gone, that was, that should be left to be a chance to go to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission make a judgment whether they want to hear it or not, and then if they chose to hear it, it's one final step at the administrative level, meaning the city level, before it would go to court.
Motion.
I move that we hear it.
Second.
The move is seconded that we, the Planning Commission review the decision on the Preservation Board.
With your previous role?
I object. I'd like to have the role called and hear it.
Alderman Combe.
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, sorry, Chair Stouter.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Powers.
Aye.
Commissioner Peebles.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Jay.
Aye.
Commissioner Spade.
Aye.
And the motion passes with all present voting yes.
So we'll kick in, we'll make sure we do everything kosher in terms of getting the review to you. We'll work with the commission, with the chairman about what would be timing of Planning Commission meetings to do it. The February meeting, as Dick says, is tight in some ways, and we have a busy meeting, so stay tuned for that.
But you'll go ahead and leave the notes.
Yeah, right, we'll do the notification. We'll, we'll start doing that proofing.
We'll go back to the top of the agenda. We have the minutes to approve from the December meeting, which were attributed to us.
That would be nice to know. Move a provo.
And Lewis did seconded that.
Previous role?
Previous rule's been requested. Are there any objections by the commissioners here?
We didn't hear who seconded. Who seconded it, please?
Um, Dan.
Do you know? No, Dan moved.
Pick a commissioner.
Who's on first? We can pick it. Okay, Mike.
Pick a commissioner.
Who's on first? We can pick it, okay, Mike.
Are there any objections to the use of the previous roll? Hearing none, the minutes to approve are distributed to us, and we'll go on to item number three on the agenda.
And we'll tell you that item number three and number four are very recent.
This is a proposed amendment to the city's strategic land use plan. If approved, it would be amendment number twelve of that document, and it's basically, it's simply requesting the approval of the planning commission to conduct a presentation and a public hearing at a future planning commission meeting. The proposed sloop amendment is based on a proposed Chapter ninety-nine lighting study and redevelopment plan that would be initiated by the city's land clearance for redevelopment authority, that would facilitate the potential development of a new facility for the National Geospatial Intelligence Agency. You may have read some articles in the paper about it recently, where they're going to need to relocate their existing facility along the riverfront. The Strategic Land Use Plan Amendment would propose changes that would reflect the proposed land uses and accommodate the proposed proposal. The site that would be looked at is located in a portion of the St. Louis Place and Carr Square neighborhoods. It includes the entire Pruitt-Igoe site, this large collection of parcels, and would extend northward to the alley just south of St. Louis Avenue, and is bounded on the west by North Jefferson Avenue and Parnell Street on the west, and North Twenty-Second Street on the east. Just for orientation purposes, this is St. Louis Place Park, De Soto Park, that's the fire department headquarters, sense it has a large manufacturing complex over here. As you can see, there's a fair amount of vacant land in that area in addition to Pruitt-Igoe. That would be the site that would be looked at. The likely meeting at which the presentation and public hearing would occur if the planning commission elects to proceed would be the Wednesday, February fourth meeting. And again, this is simply requesting your permission to conduct that presentation and public hearing at a future planning commission.
Specifically the February fourth meeting.
And you have plenty of time to advertise them.
So, yeah, the shorthand of this is not all the material has been prepared as to what the content is, but we need your permission because there's a twenty-day advertisement requirement prior to the hearing. So you're giving us permission, saying, yep, February fourth, we'll take this on, go to the, you have our permission to go to the advertisement, it would be placed on September thirteenth. On the fourteenth, we would make available on the web a more complete description of what it is that's being there, so it's available to the public, they can send in written comments, and they could come to the public hearing. But the main thing is getting your permission, yeah, next, next planning commission meeting, we're open for it to be a public hearing, people can come to the podium and speak, we'd like for you to approve that.
Can we hear motion?
So moved.
Second.
The move is seconded that we approve the closing of the public meeting.
Previous roll request.
Previous roll's been requested, are there any objections to the use of the previous roll by the commissioners here or on the telephone? Hearing none, we-
So we will send you what we have available on the website after the notice of the average draft, and of course, ultimately, there'll be a full bond resolution for you to study.
Okay, item number four.
As Don mentioned, the two resolutions are very similar. This also is, again, requesting your permission to conduct a presentation and a public hearing at a future planning commission meeting. In this case, it would be amending an existing neighborhood plan, that being a plan to the neighbors of Fifth Ward, which was a plan that was adopted by the planning commission back in two thousand and two. If approved, this would be amendment number two, it would be looking at the same geography, same uses, and would be obviously handled at the same planning commission meeting. The other thing I might want to point out is, if in fact the two amendments of these plans would be adopted, we would also be reviewing the redevelopment plan that I cited up on the slide that would be submitted by L.C.R.A., that would facilitate the development of that facility. So that would be a third item that would also be on that same planning commission.
So if the deal doesn't come through, then, then we go back and amend this back to the old plan? Okay, so this like now say housing and retail mixed use, we're going to say for large industry, if the redevelopment plan doesn't occur, we'll be back here.
So one, so two things, one, we'll share with you when we make it, the more detailed posting for next week. We have yet to get the redevelopment plan for them to tell us all specifics of the type of use that they're going to propose, and then we'll figure out strategic land use categories that would work for that. One of the things that's sort of in everybody's mind is how to make that be something that's sustainable if that particular use doesn't have, or that particular, well, that particular use doesn't have.
Yeah, we obviously wouldn't want to go back and amend the plan for the next development, large-scale development project or other-
Can't do a contingent amendment.
We might think about that.
But this plan doesn't have much legal cloud anyway, right? It's just a neighborhood plan.
No, it does.
It does.
This particular one does. Now, the, the, the-
Yes, this was adopted by the planning commission.
Yeah, prepared by a consulting firm.
Damn good one.
Yeah. I don't want to do inside baseball. The interesting thing about the Fifth Ward plan is for the area north of Pruitt-Igoe, the two thousand and two Fifth Ward plan said this should be a large-scale development area. Now, its boundaries weren't exactly co-equal with that boundary, but, but the mass, the large geography of that area was, was created with that designation. So the materials we'll get to review is what's existing, what's the existing sloop, what would be the proposed sloop, and then the same for the neighborhood plan, but in essence, the new proposal would be pushing the boundaries out for that one designation.
And this doesn't push them on time? I mean, what time are we trying to bring them?
February fourth. And then subsequent to that, then the redevelopment plan would be reviewed to be in compliance with the strategic and the neighborhood plan.
Wouldn't it be easier to do this with the three fifty-three?
No. We have the information and knowledge of what's being proposed in the area, so we're changing the vision for the area in these two plans. Then the technical way of how that would be come about is ultimately going to have some zoning changes and, in this case, a Chapter ninety-nine versus the three five three. A Chapter ninety-nine is from the land clearance for redevelopment authority, which is SLDC. They, in this case, will be the implementers of the Chapter ninety-nine until the developer is designated later on. So there won't be a developer, that will, SLDC will come to us when we review the Chapter ninety-nine, not a developer.
So the Chapter ninety-nine will be when they add back in eminent domain?
And one of the things that they're looking at is, it doesn't, is creating it for this boundary, giving L.C.R.A. the authority to do land purchases, and in this-
L.C.R.A. has authority-
L.C.R.A., right.
Intrinsically.
Intrinsically, and then they'll be, subject to still being written is the eminent domain right. Right, so Michael's, Michael's exactly right. At the end of this scenario, there's, the vehicle is, L.C.R.A. is acquiring this land to be created as a site for geospatial to go to, and in that arrangement to get ready for geospatial, all the land needs to be acquired, and in the toolbox that expected to see in the, in the Chapter ninety-nine is eminent domain.
Which will be talked about at this meeting?
Which will be talked about at this meeting. And more importantly, and not more importantly, but I'd say for a particular specific point is, because our notices for our general plans are pretty broad, is that Chapter ninety-nine itself will have a public hearing at the Board of Aldermen on January twenty-eighth, and that will be the type of thing that's posted on the light poles throughout the area. So that's, that's, that's a good net to make sure people are captured and they can come to that hearing, and they can come to ours also.
And this is all being done on the IFCOM? I mean, they're still looking at multiple sites, aren't they?
They've narrowed down from two hundred to four sites.
Three now.
Three in Missouri, one in Illinois, and the state has come out, David, make sure I get this right.
I heard what you heard.
The state was off the table now because there is already a development plan in place.
So what I'm about to, is, is the state of Missouri has now said the city site is the state's site.
State's choice.
Yeah.
But we heard that secondhand.
The, we know in the process, because it's, it's both a GSA process, and their vendor that's helping them do this is the Corps of Engineers. We've heard that in their process, the technically, they still have four, the state's backing us, so there's one here and there's one in Illinois. The one in Illinois is associated with Scott Air Force Base. The property itself would ultimately be held by the proper defense, not GSA, and they own the adjacent land in Scott Air Force Base. So we keep being told is, if there are still four, five, or three, or two, Scott has to still be in the final running in compared to what the other ones have. So we're, in essence, being compared to Scott, a greenfield site in Illinois. And the timeframe for this is the environmental impact statement is due next March, a year from now. The Corps of Engineers are the people that are doing that with CMH two impale. And in the meantime, the site has to be acquired.
Is there anything in the toolbox down the road with Chapter ninety-nine? I know we've talked about this before, Don, but, you know, because of the footprint and because of the nature of a federal building requirements, design requirements that the feds have, what, what can the city do to help, you know, if, should they choose this site to use other tools to make this community-friendly, you know?
The, one of the things, if you follow the paper, is that when they originally, they're relocating a site that's now owned by and has a bush, currently has thirty-five-hundred employees in it, next to the flood wall. They're concerned, I'm being, I'm going to be a layperson, that somebody with a pack at the seafloor, when the flood level was, could blow up the wall and wipe out this.
Sounds like-
I'll editorialize and say, the defense mapping people located themselves in the flood plain to begin with, and they did it twice in the metropolitan area.
They did have the right, they did have the right map.
Right, so, so the, so their original solicitation was, the original solicitation was for fifty acres, and then they changed it, and then increased it to, I think they increased it to ninety-four, and then up again. Part of that gets to be, is the building they have in West Virginia, which is the newest other geospatial thing, is really quite a spectacularly architecturally designed facility. The trick, though, is they don't like people to be close to it. So the, the footprint needs to have a five-hundred-foot buffer from where the public is and where the building is.
Is that without a tree, by the way?
That's without any substantial means. So we've been, we've, we, the, the, the good news is the feds, the feds are required to retain any storm runoff they create, so they're, they're agreeable to links in that. So we've been pushing them with, we've been pushing them with the idea of, what can we do in that, in that open space? And, you know, it's not going to be a razor wire fence, you know, what can we do, you know, can it be native grass, it's going to be, you know, those types of things. But they, they, they're pretty serious that that, of that buffer, and then at the entry points, they, they have some other buffering requirements.
We need a motion.
So moved.
Move is seconded. The previous roll's been requested, are there any objections to the use of the previous roll by any of the commissioners here or on the telephone? Hearing none, we're having a hearing.
So we'll be in room D, I mean, excuse me, we won't be in room D.
Are there any questions that anyone has on the delegate item?
Yeah, they were handed out.
Thank you all.
Any new business?
Did you do that already? Oh, I'm sorry, folks. I'll just pass them out. If you would execute these conflict of interest things, our funders require it. They don't need to do this.
How a funder.
Not exactly, the Paperwork Reduction Act, folks. We, we received block grant funding.
So do you want us to be, why are we here? Okay.
Oh, I'm, if I can't get them down into their mailbox by seven oh five, I'll probably be tarding for tomorrow. I don't, never mind, I don't friggin' care.
Yeah, I mean, this is important.
Yeah, we'll adjourn. If it's not clear, I think you can certainly adjourn if you have any-
Oh, all right, if there's no further business, no need for executive discussions, I have a motion to adjourn?
Yep, so moved.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Seven.
Seven.